I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. Welcome to the March 10th County Commission meeting. I would remind you to silence your cellphones. The meeting documents are at the end of the counter next to Commissioner Bender. Robert is right there if you need a listening device, and we will go on with routine business. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second, are there any amendments? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. A motion to approve the county commission minutes.
So move.
Second.
The motion and a second to approve the minutes from March 3rd, 2015. Any changes? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Motion for the bills, $449,681.73.
Pay the bills.
I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any corrections or comments? Commissioner Barth.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This week's bills do include just over $99,000 for portable radios.
Any other comments? I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number four is reports. The annual report of the Minnehaw County as of and of the year ended December 31st, 2014. The Minnehaw County Sheriff's Department report for February 2015 and the Minnehaw County Regional Juvenile Detention Center report for February 2015 are on file at the auditor's office. Oh, excuse me.
If you had any questions on the annual report.
Are there any questions for Darlene?
I did hand out a couple other documents explaining maybe a little more, you know, what that unassigned general fund balance has been for the past few years. Of course, the balance that we have at the end of December is not when our lowest occurs. Our lowest balances occur at the end of March and the end of September before we collect property taxes. So if you have any questions, I would be happy to try to answer them.
Are there any questions for Darlene? Okay. Thank you, Darlene. On to item number five, which is personnel. Carrie Dever. This is routine action. Are there any questions or is there a motion?
Move for approval.
I have a motion, is there a second? A motion and a second for routine action. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same side, motion passes unanimously. Item number six is application for abatements. Kyle Helsa.
Good morning, Commissioners Kyle Helsa, Equalization Office. We bring forward to you this morning some requests for abatements. This is the time of the year. The first one up is from the city of Colton, record ID 21647, in the amount of $77.37. This was when they purchased the barrel lot.
Do we want to do them all together, Kyle? You want to just read through them and then we'll make one motion?
The second one is Sioux Falls School District, record ID 30931, for 2014 property taxes of $571.05. The third is Sioux Falls School District, record ID 30929, 2014 property taxes in the amount of $300.61. The item D is Ross Winkman, record ID 75112, 2014 property taxes in the amount of $339.91. This was the home that was hit by the bus, and it knocked it off its foundation, so they raised it. Item E is Lonnie Davis, record ID 53474, in the amount of $506.09. Again, this was another building that was removed. Item F, Floyd Schrader, record ID 25118, 2014 property taxes in the amount of $1,477.55. This is for a house that was removed.
Are there any questions for Kyle on those abatements? Seeing none, I would ask for a motion for items A through F.
It's my motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second for abatements for items A through F. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same side, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Kyle. And Pam Nelson will address the elderly freeze assessments.
Morning.
Good morning.
We have several today. We have record ID 35344 for $647.40. We have record ID 39788 for $536.65. We have record ID 45006 for $593.13. We have record ID 42895 for $16.46. We have record ID 48155 for $515.33. And we have record ID 58148 for $379.32. And we have record ID 11125 for $1,310.14.
And I think we might have missed two unless I was following. Did we do record ID number 45261 for the amount of $108.89 and record ID number 48924 the amount of $28.53?
I think we did miss those.
Okay. Not sure. I think we got them all. Are there any other comments or questions?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve them. I do have a comment.
That's items A, or excuse me, G through O. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve of the comment from Commissioner Barth.
I just would point out that the applicants have to make this application every year as their income levels may have changed, and being most of them pretty elderly, they don't always remember their medications, much less their paperwork.
And sometimes it's just new to the system, so. I have a motion and a second on the table. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same side, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Pam.
Thank you.
Item number seven is notices and requests. Authorize the county auditor to publish notice to bidders on project MC 1417, repair flood damage on various infrastructures in Minnehaw County. DJ Boothey. Good morning.
Morning, Commissioners. DJ Boothey, Highway Superintendent. This project is a result of the flooding that we had in June of 2014, and this is a FEMA reimbursable project at 85 percent. The county will be paying approximately 15 percent of these costs. The project is estimated to cost $125,000. A map of the different sites is included in your packet there on page two. I'll go over them, but there's a lot of different ones, and so they're all relatively minor sites, and we hope to move forward with that project if you could grant us the permission to do that today.
Are there any questions for DJ on this? I'd look for a motion to authorize publication.
It's my motion.
A motion, is there a second?
A second.
A motion and a second. Any comments? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same side, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number eight is planning and zoning notices. There are none. Item number nine is petition for compromise of lien, DPNO 83886, in the amount of $1,334. Judge Barth.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The original amount on this lien was $2,100 for public defender services from December of '13. I'm sorry, yes. The applicant came in and asked for relief last year in September, and we turned him down. Since then, he's made payments totaling $766, payments in September, October, November, and January of this year. He still has a balance here of $1,334, and it does appear he received an income tax refund of $1,118. He's requesting a release in full with no further payments, and he wants us to, he reminds us that he's made payments of $766. He says that he was unaware at the time that there were hourly fees associated with receiving services from the public defender. Of course, that might not be on top of your mind when you're being charged with a crime, but those you have to sign, I believe, for acknowledging that you've been informed of that. Anyway, I believe the applicant is present, and if he wants to say something, he can without coming forward and without identifying himself.
So if the applicant is here, if you'd like to just speak loudly, please? You don't have to say your name or anything.
Okay, good morning. I had petitioned the young commission once, once before when I believe there wasn't a whole commission board. I have a crystal ball for you to look into to show you how deserving I am of some relief on this. All I can really do is stand on my own two feet as a native of Sioux Falls and a former Marine, and really what I'm asking today is if you forgive $1,000, I'm prepared to pay the rest off and put this whole matter behind me. I was never advised of hourly charges. The form that I signed basically alluded to some payment. I was between work at the time due to non-compete agreement that I signed with a former boarder. Had I been advised at any point during the process of an $89 hourly fee, I would have made different decisions regarding this.
Are there any questions for the applicant?
So what was your counter offer again, or this new offer?
$334.
My proposal, if you were to relieve, forgive $1,000 of what I owe, I'm prepared to pay the remainder of that today.
That's $334. Are there any questions for the applicant or discussion?
Madam Chair, I do believe that that would certainly improve his, you know, his original debt of $2,100. If he were to have paid $1,100 total of that bill, clearly that's a fairly good effort. He has been making payments for these last few months, and I would note he no longer lives in our county, and, you know, he's trying to get things going. I would make a motion, I don't know if I'll get a second to accept his offer.
There's a motion to accept the offer of an additional payment of $334 to release the lien. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. Comments? Are there any comments? Seeing none, I guess I just have one, and that is that a lawyer outside, I understand you said you would make different decisions than you probably would have, but a lawyer outside of a public defender's office is quite a bit more expensive than what, I mean, you're getting a huge discount just by coming to the county instead of getting your own private lawyer, so, yeah. And that's okay. You don't have to comment if you don't want to, just in case you weren't aware. Are there any other comments? I have a motion and a second to accept compromise of lien with the payment of $334 for giving $1,000 of the remaining lien. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same side, motion passes unanimously. Thank you. And Robert can help you with that. This is the time for opportunity of public comment. If anyone would like to speak to anything that is not on the agenda, this would be the time to come forward. And I don't see anybody, so, okay. We will move on. Item number 10 is to authorize the chairman to sign the grant agreement between Minnehaw County and the South Dakota Department of Health for the purchase of equipment for fatality management plan. Lynn, yeah?
Commissioners, Linda Young, Emergency Management Office. As you know, Dr. Snell and I and a host of others have been working to develop a mass fatalities plan for Minnehaw County, not only with that plan, but acquiring equipment for a community mass fatality response if one should be required. The South Dakota, excuse me, Department of Health, excuse me, has been funding this project to about 99 percent, so there hasn't been hardly any county expenditures except for time of your staff working on this and miscellaneous dollars here and dollars there, one or two dollars. So in keeping with that agreement that we have with the state, we have an agreement or a grant for $13,000. $5,000 of that will be used on personal protective equipment and another $8,000 on a portable x-ray machine. So with this grant, like I said, we'll purchase that and then hopefully continue to enhance our mass fatality response for that. So I'd ask the commission to authorize the chairman to enter into that agreement with the state of South Dakota.
Are there any questions for Lynn? Commissioner Barth.
Where are you going to store it?
So this will be part of the mass fatalities trailer that we have.
Okay.
And after we get the motion, if I can have two seconds just to talk about our afternoon, then I would do that.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the signing of the agreement. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same side, motion passes unanimously. And additional comments?
So Commissioners, as you know, at 1:00 you have a tour today out at the WH Lyons Expo Building in the North Room, and over the last two, two and a half years, as I indicated, a group of planners from the county, including myself and Dr. Snell and my assistant Doug Blonker, and then Sandy Friends from the Health Department, Regan Smith from the city, Samantha Hill from South Dakota Department of Health, Doug Nahava from the Funeral Directors Association, and Tom Welch from the Office of Emergency Management, have been working on a mass fatalities plan and equipment for the county. We finally pulled a lot of that stuff together and have set up a mass fatalities exercise slash training session all week long. So yesterday we moved all of our equipment in, today we're doing, this morning we're doing some fine tuning, and then at 1:00 the commission and county department heads are invited out for a tour of our capability, and then at 2:00 we're going to have a media briefing. And then throughout the rest of the week, we've got several other groups of interest, including the public nurses or the nurses from the public school district here in Sioux Falls, the Air National Guard, city fire cadets, there's a group of paramedic students, the DCI, South Dakota Emergency Management, South Dakota Health, coroners, funeral directors, and the group of healthcare that will be coming out through this tour the next several days. So it's something that, like indicated, we've been working on for the last couple of years, and we're excited to finally come to closer to a point where our capability, if required, hopefully never is, would be there, so.
Thank you.
So I hope to see you at 1:00. I know a couple of you aren't going to be there because of your busy schedules, but we have handed out that material, and we'd be willing to answer any questions whenever you come up with them, so, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Lynn. Any other questions for Lynn? Okay. Thank you. Item number 11 is consider a bid award for project number MC 119121127MS15. DJ Boothey.
Morning again, Commissioners. This project is for our micro-surfacing project. On February 10th, we were authorized to advertise for this project, and we took bids and we received four bids for the micro-surfacing. And our engineers' final cost estimate was about $500,000. The low bidder was $448,601.62. Aztec Corporation of, I think, Minnesota was the low bidder. They happen to be the contractor that did our first micro-surfacing project two years ago, so we're familiar with them. We enjoy working with them, and we would like your permission to execute this contract.
Any questions on the micro-surfacing project? Look for a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same side, motion passes unanimously. Item number 12 is consider a bid award for project MC 114BR14. DJ Boothey.
Again, Commissioners, we took bids last week on a bridge project, replacement project on Highway 114. We received six bids on that project. The engineer's final cost estimate was $482,000. Of the six bids, the low bidder was Knoll's Dragline Construction, a local contractor that we've done a lot of work with, for $461,954.92. And we've reviewed the bids and would like your permission to execute a contract with Knoll's Dragline.
Any questions on this bid award? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a motion and a second? I have a motion and a second. No further questions? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same side, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, DJ. Number 13, briefing on imposition of seasonal load restrictions on various positions of Minnehaw County highway system.
On an annual basis in the spring, when the thaw, or when the ice starts coming out of the ground and the roads start thawing out, they become a little bit unstable, and so around the state, agencies are encouraged to post load limits on their road sections to try to reduce the amount of damage to the pavement due to the freeze-thaw cycle. And this week is a good week for us to do that with the high temperatures coming and the high temperatures that we've had in the last week or two. And so we typically do the same roads every year. There are six sections of roadways that we post our load limits for, and that's based off of the traffic that we see on those roads and the condition of the roads and the design of those roads. Basically, they're not as structurally sound as some of our other road sections. And so we post them for gross load limit of 80,000 pounds and six tons per axle, which is typically not going to be 80,000 pounds, but if you were to have enough axles, you could still haul a legal load of 80,000 pounds on those road sections. So if you have any questions, I can answer them now. Other than that, this is not a commission-action-required item. We just want to let you guys know that we have posted them. They'll be posted until April 30th, unless we receive a whole bunch of warm weather, all the thawing is completed, and we remove them before then.
Any questions on the briefing? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 14 is a briefing from the Minnehaw County Highway Department on the comprehensive study of this summary of studies and planning documents related to the East Maple-West Park Street. Shannon Schultz.
Good morning, Commissioners. Shannon Schultz, Assistant Highway Superintendent to Minnehaw County. So on the 13th of January, this board, the commission board, asked us to, excuse me, can you start over? On January 13th, Split Rock Township asked this board to consider taking over the jurisdiction of the subject corridor, which is East Maple Street, also West Park Street coming west out of Brandon. Subsequent to that meeting, or that request by Split Rock Township, the commission asked our department to do some investigations and see what known information is out there, studies, et cetera. So this is a long informational memo. I won't read all of it to you, but I will read the summary to you about the findings. So it is evident that there are many reports out there, and I'll just name them really quick. The Brandon Intermediate School Traffic Impact Study from HDR in 2013. Then there was the Brandon's Comprehensive Plan, which covers 2007 to 2027. There's some email correspondence between myself and the city of Sioux Falls, and then there's a traffic analysis update from HDR called Highway 100 from Madison Street to Maple Street as part of their work on the Trunk Highway 100 corridor. So amongst all of those things, I kind of gleaned out the important things that are related to this corridor, and so, you know, not any one of those documents comprehensively covers the entire corridor, so I'm taking bits and pieces. You know, the traffic impact study from the school is on the east side, the highway corridor with Trunk Highway 100 on the west side, so. There's not a single document that covers or succinctly foretells when it will become paved and be put into service as an east-west major arterial, who will pay for it, and what events should trigger paving and later widening to four lanes. So currently, the status of the corridor is such that Split Rock Township owns it, and they've requested jurisdiction be taken over by the county because they're having a problem maintaining its condition in its gravel state. It is clear in all of the documents that the city of Brandon does not plan on developing the land adjacent to the corridor, at least until after 2027. Water and sewer services appear to be major hurdles at this time. Also, much of the corridor represents difficult conditions for development due to environmental constraints such as steep terrain and the flood plain of the Big Sioux. It's unclear when the timing makes sense for the city of Brandon to take over the jurisdiction of East Maple Street, West Park Street, or exactly when it will become or begin to function as a principal arterial, urban arterial. So as stated multiple times on my memo, the county typically does not have jurisdiction over four-lane arterials. So in the coming months, it will be important for the county to participate and advocate and represent our interests during the process of updating the long-range transportation plan. Also, I'd like to point out that my email correspondence with the city of Sioux Falls, they are doing some more traffic modeling on the Trunk Highway 100 corridor and this corridor of East Maple Street that will answer some of our questions that remain unanswered. So in my opinion, the traffic growth along this corridor will see a little bit of an increase soon after the connection with Highway 100 when that's built. But because additional development adjacent to this corridor is constrained by several factors, additional trips being generated from adjacent development will be minimal. Maple Street will ultimately become another east-west connecting arterial route between Brandon and Sioux Falls. It will also provide another connection from Brandon to Highway 100. It's only a matter of time before Sioux Falls and Brandon grow together in terms of a contiguous urbanized area. At this time, the Maple Street corridor, as well as Minnehaw County, are both stuck in a transitional period where the township no longer wants jurisdiction, but Brandon has not yet reached a point where annexation of this adjacent land is needed. I believe this in-between status of Maple Street is sustainable in the very near future. However, it is difficult to predict what influence the Highway 100 connection will have on traffic patterns and how much additional traffic will be drawn through the corridor to access the new Highway 100. Time will tell. There is no doubt that this corridor falls within Brandon's growth area, so ultimately in the end, Brandon will have jurisdiction of this east-west arterial street. So going forward, my recommendations are to continue to monitor traffic patterns on east-west Maple, east Maple-West Park Street, to continue to evaluate traffic impacts once the connection is made with Highway 100. Furthermore, start to look at what cuts and fills will be needed and to achieve a 45 mile per hour design speed, including what right-of-way impacts and those cost estimates might be. Also, investigate alternatives to a full-blown grading paving operation, something similar to a blotter roadway surface. That blotter surface just might be the transition period between now and when it is fully ultimately paved into an urban arterial corridor. And then also continue to stay involved in the developments of future planning studies.
All right. Thank you, Shannon. Are there any questions for Shannon? Commissioner Barth.
Shannon, right now, it's a township road.
Absolutely.
It's got a 66-foot right-of-way.
Yes.
What kind of right-of-way does a four-lane road require?
Well, that's a great question. No, less than 100, probably more like 120 would be, would be good. Sometimes those four lanes, sometimes have no median or no center turn lane, and so you can squish the lanes together. This is conducive to that because there's very little development on both sides, and so the number of approaches and accesses requiring that center two-way left turn lane might go away.
And at this point, the county has no four-lane highways?
No.
Okay.
Any other questions? Commissioner Kelly.
You mentioned that the township can't handle it and they want us to take it over.
That's their request, yes.
What would we do differently? I mean, why would we be any more capable of handling it than they do under the existing conditions? It's just an old country road.
Is anyone from the township here? I think the presumption, I think the presumption is that it would be paved.
It would be paved.
It would no longer be a gravel surface, and it would be paved.
But there's about a quarter-mile section there that that's a pretty big challenge, isn't it?
Very steep terrain, a lot of grading, so the blotter surface that I talked about is a hard surface, but not necessarily requiring perhaps a full grading job to bring it to a 55 mile per hour design speed, which means a lot less grading.
And the cars don't justify the expense.
There are county roads that are paved that have less ADT than this gravel route. That being said, there are many gravel roads in the state that have a lot more ADT, so, you know, just because it's paved and there's a certain ADT doesn't, you know, they're not necessarily related.
Well, I thought your report was extremely thorough.
Thank you.
Very good report. Sorry, just a minute.
Commissioner Hager?
Yeah.
Could I ask one question?
Yeah. Sorry, I was signing papers.
That's okay. So you talk in your report about arterial roads?
Correct.
And that this is an arterial road, and then you make the statement that the county doesn't have jurisdiction over arterial roads? And that's when I got lost.
Urban arterials or major arterials are usually following the jurisdiction of cities and highways or state highway DOTs. Our functional classifications on the majority of our roads are one of two things, rural major collector or rural minor collector.
And so is, is this, does this road qualify as one of those two things before it becomes an arterial road, or is it an arterial road right now?
In existing Brandon's Comprehensive Plan, it is identified as an urban arterial route. It's not functioning that way, but that's what it has identified currently under Brandon's Comprehensive Plan.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions for Shannon? All right. This was a briefing only. This was a briefing only, so thank you.
Briefing memo, thank you.
Thank you, and it was a very thorough report. I appreciate that. Okay. Did the township folks want to say anything about this report? Did the township want to say anything about this report?
Oh, I guess.
You have to come up and identify yourself and give your address.
Dennis Horner, I'm board representative from Split Rock Township. Back on January 13th, as most of you know, we brought to you the information in regards to the road structure and needs in the future, and we have requested that through the county, knowing that that's probably the only way that we can acquire any additional fund to help get that, something done with that situation out there, is to turn it over to the county situation so you can go proceed farther down the line to see if there's other additional funds, state, federal, whatever, to help with that project. And that has been our request, and I know it's not something that's going to happen overnight. But if we don't start somewhere, 10 years ago, they started it in 2004 when they done Six Mile Road. Nothing's been done in that meantime. 10 years is a good time to, let's reiterate it with all the changes that have been made out there and taking place. And maybe it's time that we need to proceed and see if there's something down the road that can be done in the next 10 years. So, we thank you for what you can do for us, and we appreciate your time.
Okay. Thank you very much. Are there any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Item number 15, authorize the chairman to sign the 2015 memorandum of understanding between Minnehaha County and the SDSU Extension Services, Ken McFarland.
Good morning, Commissioners. As you know, a few years ago, the SDSU Extension Service went through a major reorganization on how they provide services to counties. And what you have before you today is the 2015 MOU regarding the SDSU's provision of service to us during the 2015 year. Some of the highlights of the agreement, as you know, SDSU will continue to provide the full salary and benefit support for one full-time 4-H youth advisor, and they pay for that cost 100%. In addition, we have a part-time advisor where we have an agreement with SDSU to split that cost, 50% for the work of the part-time 4-H youth advisor. And that is estimated, our share to be this year of $8,890. It's about a $300 increase from last year. Otherwise, all the terms of the agreement remain the same. You know, we continue to provide the administrative support for the 4-H youth advisor over there. We provide housing for it. We provide some program, programming expenses for the 4-H youth advisor. And then we also go ahead and provide office space for the two FNEP advisors that are down in the basement over at that building. So, again, all of the other, all of the other components of the contract are the same as the previous year, except for a slight increase in the cost for the part-time advisor, and we'd recommend approval.
Are there any questions on this contract? I would like to say, as I've said in the past, that I wish SDSU would consider a full, two full-time people with us paying a portion of that second person, because I think there is definitely a need in Minnehaha County. We are the biggest county and have the largest population of youth in the state of South Dakota, and I think we could very easily put that person to a lot of work. And I think that they are being constrained by the lack of that full-time person. Are there any other questions or comments? I look for a motion to approve. Some of, is there a second?
I'll second.
The motion is second to authorize the signing of the memorandum of understanding between Minnehaha County and the SDSU Extension Office. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number 16 is an update and status report of the 90th legislative session. Robert Wilson.
Good morning, Commissioners. Robert Wilson of the commission office. This is the last week of the main run of the legislature. According to the legislature's calendar, all bills need to be passed out of both houses by today. Obviously, they have the rest of the week, so they still have work that they will be doing. But most of the bills we have been watching through the session have been wrapped up and disposed of in one way or another by this point. I'm going to bring your attention to two bills that we've been watching through the session that had some additional work yesterday. The first one is, we lost, I'll skip around and start with Senate Bill 1, and that is the, one of the highway bills that has been moving through the process through the entire session. You'll recall that there were really two competing bills that went through. One came out of the governor's office, one came out of a summer study, had different amounts of overall funding for them, statewide to both the state and local, local county, municipality road systems. One was in the neighborhood of $100 million, the other one was in the neighborhood of $50 million. Haven't this, after the conference committee, or excuse me, the committee hearing yesterday morning in state affairs for Senate Bill 1, I don't have an overall amount of what that bill is, but I just was going to walk you through some of the provisions of what's in that bill and what it appears may be the bill as it gets closer to the end of the session. It creates a local bridge improvement grant fund, as well as a local highway government, local government highway and bridge fund. And then, on the revenue portion, where originally there was, currently, there's a 3% excise tax on purchasing new vehicles, that moves up to four. That was, that was originally in at least one of the versions. That stays as it, as it is. Motor fuel increases by 6 cents over the next three years. That's a little lower increase than, than at least one of the versions that was moving through, but that is the increase. Vehicle registration fees increase about 20%, and those are all different, those are different rates based on vehicle weight, as you know, up 20%. The wheel tax that counties may impose has increased from $4 per wheel to $5 per wheel, and also has a maximum where addition, a higher number of wheels can be counted in that. So, it goes up to, I believe it's a possibility of up to $60 per vehicle for some of the bigger multi, multi-axle, axle vehicles. So, that, where, again, this, all of this happened in House State Affairs yesterday. The bill included eight amendments, so our association is still sorting through, through the bill and the overall effects. Obviously, the headline grabber yesterday was that it also included amendment to raise the speed limit on portions of the interstate highway system. So, if I, if you have any questions on that bill, I'd be happy to answer it.
Are there any questions on Senate Bill 1? I have one. Robert, do we know yet what the effect would be for the county, or would all this money be going back to the state?
The comments that, committee comments, as they were wrapping up and making closing statements prior to passing the amended bill yesterday, was that it, it was, added some additional funds to local governments. So, again, we haven't seen where exactly that would break out, but got to think that with the wheel tax increase there, that that would be, that would be an increase coming to, to local governments, as well as the registration increases. So, it appears that it would have, would have some benefits to counties. And then the, the other bill that I've been looking for, and I've lost my bill number, but it's one that I've spoken with you about a number of times, that would include email communication between a quorum of, of members in open communication and, and open records requirements. That was in, in committee yesterday, and that, after passing both the House Committee and the full House, was defeated in the Senate Committee. And it was, the, most of the testimony was that by and large, the legislate, that committee, they, they supported the concept, but they, they heard some feedback from the school board associations that there was a question of if multiple members of a school board, which would apply to any elective body, got constituent emails, that if that went to multiple members of the board, or if it went to one member of the board and then was forwarded to all, all other members, if potentially that could be considered involving a quorum and be, become an open record that originally the intent of the constituent may, may not have been to, to make a public record statement, as opposed to getting up at the podium in, in front of, during a public meeting and having full knowledge that that statement is going to be public. So, that.
That was House Bill 1153.
Thank you very much. I could not find it once I got up here. But it, I certainly would not be surprised to see that idea back in some form in, in future, future years, because it seemed like there was support for that, but just this particular forum didn't have the votes to, to get out of a committee yesterday. And again, would point out that, that this would be consistent, our practice and your practice, as we communicate with you, and you communicate amongst yourselves using email, would be, would be consistent with the, that proposal if, if and when it were to be, were to be passed.
Robert, it appears 1106 is on its way to the governor. Looks like, I mean, it's come out of everybody on a consent calendar almost. That's how we, how we gain information.
Yes. And that, you're right, there's only been.
That addresses the issue we had.
There's only been one no vote, and that, again, came out of an issue here in Minnehaha County and adds some clarity to the way that you as elected officials, both on the county level and municipalities, members of an elective board can gain information and go out and, view areas or direct, gain direct knowledge, as long as you state during a conversation that, meeting of the board where that item is discussed, make it clear that you had that contact or that visit.
Okay. Any other questions? Commissioner Barth.
So, that, that was the Dick Kelly bill, right?
It was referred to as that a number of times, yes.
Okay. Well, I just wanted to mention.
Congress does that with the little bills.
Are there any other questions? Robert, did you have any other?
No.
Okay. We'll move on then to item number 18, which is new business. Is there any new business?
Madam Chair.
Pardon me? Oh, did I skip a page? Sorry, I did that last week, too. Are there any liaison reports? Commissioner Barth.
This is somewhat of a new business and a liaison report, because although I'm no longer liaison to the Interlake Community Action, I am still working with them on their annual Heartland House fundraiser event. That event will be April 9th. And obviously, for sponsorship, they're looking for, for help. And I have told them that Minnehaha County would buy a table at that event, which is $350. And I would urge us to find a way to do that, although I'm, you know, we bought a table or whatever at the Chamber of Commerce event, which was more expensive than that. And I think those of us that have attended these events in the past have found it an eye-opener to see how, how they work with people. You know, obviously, a lot of organizations do work that government would need to do if they didn't exist. And the Heartland House works with people to make them better at living independent lives, away from being institutionalized, or addicted, or flat-broke, or whatever, and it's really helpful. Obviously, they can kick people out of their program. We don't get to kick people out of our jail. And so, I would urge us to support this project and put it on our schedule to attend that dinner on April 9th.
Any other liaison reports? Commissioner Benega.
Just very briefly, this morning, Commissioner Heiberg and myself met with the Public Defender's Office and discussed the advisory board's roles and responsibilities as it pertains to South Dakota codified law. And we'll continue that conversation, because there was quite discussion this morning and differences of opinion on what was required and frankly, what is stated in those laws. So, we will continue to have that conversation and bring that information back.
Okay. Any other liaison reports? Commissioner Kelly.
On that same, they've had, what, four months running on that new program they have for management program for Public Defender, and now, and so far, it's been going well, I think. They're about three quarters of the way through the Public Advocate, and then hopefully the next step will be going to the state's attorney's office.
Okay. The software program you're speaking of.
That's the one we developed in-house.
Yep. Commissioner Barth.
I just, Gerald, thank you for those comments. And, you know, the fact that we have these other departments, which are, although they're under our umbrella, their, their actual administration is a little bit obscured by having these advisory boards. And you can look also at things like the Sioux Empire Fair Association, which runs the fair. You can look at the museum board, which basically is in between us and the city. There are a lot of departments which are, have sort of murky overviews on them. Certainly, our Public Defender, Public Advocate are probably chief among them.
Any other comments? All right. Then move on to new business. Is there any new business? Is there any old business? I believe there's no executive session.
No executive session?
Yep. Look for a motion to adjourn.
Show vote.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. We are adjourned.